As soon as Zach knocks on the door. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, September 26th edition of the Moscow Administrative Committee meeting. The first order of business today, well, I guess we'll entertain them. Any sort of changes in the agenda, first thing? Anybody have any? Other than that, the first thing is approval of the minutes from September 12th.
I move we approve.
Move by John, second by Gina to approve minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay. Motion carries. The meatier part of the agenda is up now. Moscow Police Department Commission Accreditation on Law Enforcement, or KLEA, discussion. James Frye is gonna tell us what he thinks of that.
I'd like Karen Potter as well.
So approximately two years ago, we, Chief Duke and I put in for the KLEA national accreditation, and that process, we got accepted and started that. And over time, we've come to realize that it's very time-consuming, it's very laborious, and they're now letting us know that most police departments that do this actually hire additional staff to run the accreditation. And with everything we have going on in the police department, we don't feel that at this time, this is something that we want to continue with. I've talked to Chief Duke about this, and he agrees at this time that we probably should back out of it. And just in the last month, we started getting letters from other agencies that are showing concerns with the new update manual that's going to be coming about. And these departments are actually questioning whether or not it's such a good deal anymore. And one of them writes, this is from Gainesville, Virginia, writes, "The revision proposed in the sixth edition appeared to be developed in a vacuum, are not best practices, and are not evidence-based protocols. Many of these revisions are, in essence, unfunded mandates and could have staggering fiscal impacts on agencies. Many others are simply regulatory." So we've seen this over the last couple of months where we were doubting whether or not we should continue, and other agencies are starting to doubt the same thing. And there's, I got some additional letters here that have been written. The impact of the Power DMS. So Power DMS is the system that you use to put in your policies and procedures and your proofs. It is also very set up so that it's not user-friendly, takes a lot of time to learn. Karen has been the one who inputs that stuff, and every time, if you're not in it continually, you almost have to go back and relearn the process because there's nothing user-friendly about it. So it takes a lot of time, a lot of personnel hours to just even input the policies and the standards.
John.
This accreditation process, when it's all done, chief, does it do anything positive for us?
That's my question.
We get a certificate that says we're nationally accredited. It doesn't give us any break on our insurance. We're already accredited through the Idaho Chiefs, and I'm on an accreditation team where I actually go into other departments and make sure that they meet the standard. And Moscow's standards with our policies are right up there. We're state-accredited, and that doesn't even gain us anything, but we'll continue through that process. But I don't see where this process is gaining us anything, other than a lot more policies and procedures.
At the time that KLEA was approved by the council, of course, we got sort of a scholarship from the National KLEA Organization. And then about $2,750, I believe, is what we had, council had budgeted for. The idea was to stay up on best practices nationwide. Although it doesn't gain you any break in your insurance, what it does is it assures that your processes and procedures are of a national stature and best practices across the nation. So that was the idea. At the time, it was expected that we would have to put some work into getting it done. But when Chief Duke presented it well over a year ago, I believe, he intended that James Frye, who was the captain at the time, and Karen Potter would be able to spearhead most of that. Since that time, it's obviously become too great of a burden, and with the changes and the lack of a user-friendly interface, that it's just become more cumbersome than it's worth at this time. And I join the chief in his request to, that we essentially get out of it now. It's not, it's not saying that our practices aren't where they should be. As James indicated, we are accredited by the Idaho Chiefs. We have participated in probably two RICOPS, which was an accreditation for Western United States Police Departments. We participated in that several years ago. So our practices and procedures are well-recognized, and they work well. But it was just another check to make sure that we were keeping up to speed. But like with a lot of licensures, sometimes it just becomes too onerous to make it worth your while.
Gina.
You said we were gonna lose our scholarship money? So that's really the only fiscal impact, is that we would lose the money that was scholarship to us, anyway?
And what we paid the initial $2,750.
Okay. Okay. Well, I don't, I don't see that as problematic.
My only other comment is, like a lot of other things that the city of Moscow does, we're leading already and not following. And I think that our police department can take credit in its area of leading and not following, so I'm not at all concerned about the best practices that you people come to, that you enforce, and that Gary oversees. So I have no problem at all in dropping this accreditation process.
I'd like to hear what Karen might have to say about the whole thing.
Well, the chief and I were definitely on board with the process and very excited about it, and wrote the grant and were awarded the, or did the application, we awarded the grant. And then, as we got into it, like he said, it is very laborious. And so we joined the Northwest PAC, which is an organization that is here in the Northwest with the police departments. We even were mock surveyors for Tacoma Police Department to really see how the process was done. And as we got further and further into it, I started talking to agencies about personnel. And they said, always one to two people. And so my question to them, in a conversation that I had in June, was, why weren't we told this, and how would we have known this? And they said, the only way to find out is really to get into it, and to see how it impacts your agency. So it's kind of been a learning process as we've gone, and some surprises along the way.
Okay. Thank you for your input. I see no problem with dropping this. It seems to be just a participation certificate. It doesn't really get us anything, and it costs us a bunch of time that could be better spent on law enforcement. So I would support this and suggest that we put it on a consent agenda for next Monday's meeting.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item three on today's agenda is Heart of the Arts Incorporated Management Agreement for the 1912 Center. And Dwight and Jenny are gonna tell us why this is a good idea.
Well, good afternoon. As you know, Heart of the Arts has been managing the operations and fundraising and facility development for several years. Just, I guess we're about ready to finish our 10th year. And so we are at a point now where we need to renew that agreement. And this is fairly simple, providing you agree that it needs to be renewed. This is a five-year extension. It'll go through 2021. There's no change in the annual fiscal obligations, it would remain the same. And that's about $106,000, little over annually. They would continue their fundraising and building development, as well as management of the facility's operations. And in a nutshell, that's it. And we would like to have your recommendation for renewal of this.
Okay. Jenny?
I wanted to ask you, $106,100 annually. We get $95,000 annually.
Well, we have funds in there that are for maintenance, insurance, things like that, as well.
Okay.
Dwight's gotta get a little.
I yell, you know.
He gets a certain percentage, right? It's like a real estate agent kind of thing?
Yeah, my annual hunting trip, you know? Things are getting tight. No, but yeah, that extra there is what we have to pay for the insurance.
John.
Well, I know, you guys have been doing a great job. You really have. You're slowly but surely renovating the building. I think you've talked my high school class into donating two windows, and we were glad to do so. A year ago, we did both of our nights, Friday night and Saturday night, at the 1912 building. Everybody gave it high marks, every event that I've been to. I know that the city council would like it to eventually, sooner rather than later, naturally, become self-supporting, and would not need the money that the city puts into it every year. I think you're working toward that goal. That being the case, I have no problem with renewing this through 2021.
Gina.
Yeah, I don't either. You had a look on your face when I stated that.
I think we will negotiate terms in five years and make sure that we're in good shape. But until the building's fully renovated, I don't see that Heart of the Arts will be stepping back any of the financial obligation from the city in terms of our request. It does take a certain amount of funding to make sure that I can run the facility while we are fundraising such large dollar amounts. To give you a picture, I have this lovely packet prepared for Kerry. It is, it says that in the past, in your fiscal year, we added $219,468.96 to the facility's value. And we give him that lovely packet so that he can reappropriate the money into the asset, so that it's part of the facility's value. All those windows on the front of the building didn't come cheap. But fundraising for the facility would be greatly hindered if we had to also find my executive director salary out of our maintenance, out of our standard rentals and operations. So what we're trying to do is earn the money, and raise the money as quickly as we can. Our town tends to fundraise about $100,000 to $200,000 a year, no problem. After that, you're getting into larger donors and bigger commitments over a period of time. So our goal in the next five years is to commit that we will get the next floor up and operational. And that's, we're looking at probably close to $2 million worth of work. And that's, like, not knowing exactly what the price point will be when we go out to bid, of course, but with our intent to fundraise about a half million dollars a year over the next period of years, so that we can accomplish that renovation. If we had to also figure out how to pay me beyond this point, the top floor would be jeopardized in terms of its progress and getting it fundraised for. So I think our new lease agreement will probably also need to consider that. That's why I made the face, because I'm not sure, and we can't say for sure where we'll be, but I'd like to revisit that four years from now, when we have a year to make sure we can negotiate it properly.
And I'm sure you will. You always have. You work very hard.
Keep pushing.
You've got a good product out there. And so, you know, if you hit the mark fine, if you miss it by a little bit, then have to be renegotiated.
Yeah, well, that, this keeps us on our game, to visit you every year and tell you what we've done, and how far we've come in the fundraising and renovations. So I think it's a good program for the future of this facility.
Excellent. Well, I guess I would recommend that we put this on the consent agenda as well, renewal of the agreement for another five years. Everybody in agreement with that? Yeah?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much for your presentation. Item number four on today's agenda is a proposed amendment to Title IV, Chapter 7, to amend the procedure and criteria for amendments for planned unit developments. Mike Ray is gonna give us some input on that.
Good afternoon. How you doing? So, you know, I just wanted to brief the committee today on an upcoming code amendment that you can be conducting a public hearing on at the next council meeting, October 3rd, which will be this next Monday. And it's a, an ordinance that the Planning and Zoning Commission's been working on for the last couple of months. Really started with a request from Ms. Brenda Von Wondruska regarding a current project that she was the developer on, the Silos Plan Unit Development on Steiner Avenue. She'd originally requested that the Planning and Zoning Commission take a look at the possibility of amending the regulations to allow for flexibility within planned unit developments. So right now, you have a, the Silos, and it's really a mixed-use development. So you have, you know, this is one of the, I guess, the very few planned unit developments that we actually have that are mixed-use. A lot of the developments we have are more like Tiempo Commons. So you have White Avenue, the White Avenue Roundabout there to the northeast. They're primarily single-family residential, and they go through the planned unit development process in order to achieve private streets, private roads, as well as smaller lot sizes and lot widths than what would normally be allowed within the underlying zone. So you can see, you know, the small lot sizes as compared to the adjacent neighborhood up here on Cambridge. You have Camden Court, which is also a planned unit development. Folkestone, which is also a PUD. So you have a lot of these PUDs that are just going through the process in order to achieve the smaller lot sizes, and just more of a different category of residential use than you'd normally see if you were just pigeonholed within a certain zoning district. And so, the request was that, you know, within the Silos development, you have a lot of apartments, I think there's 12 or more. You also have some space that used to be the coffee shop on the first floor. There's some space that was office space, designated office space. And so, the request was more along the lines of taking one of those office spaces and converting those into a residential space. And right now, through our PUD regulations, we have two categories. We have minor amendments and major amendments. Minor amendments are pretty simple. You know, they have a process that you go through that goes back through the original hearing body, so in this case, it'd be Planning and Zoning Commission. If you meet the minor amendment criteria, and there's 11 of them that you have to meet in order to be deemed a minor amendment, you go to Planning and Zoning Commission. It's not a public hearing, it's just a review before the commission. A lot of the other minor amendments that we've seen are mainly, maybe it's an adjustment for one lot within a PUD to adjust the setbacks. There's one with an orientation of the building. So a lot of these are pretty simple to be taken to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you go on to the major amendment criteria, there's a little bit different of a process. The way it lays out is that you pretty much start from the beginning of the entire PUD process. So if you were to look at the process in whole, you would start out with a neighborhood meeting. So every PUD is required to go through a neighborhood meeting where you give notice to everybody within 600 feet. Goes through preliminary PUD review, there's 30-day notice requirement on that. Goes before city council. And there's really two types of PUDs. Type one, that are not associated with a subdivision plat, like the Silos. And you have a type two, like Tiempo Commons, that are associated with a subdivision plat. So the, once you get into the type two, there's a higher level of review where it goes to city council instead of just Planning and Zoning Commission. So in the case of a type two, you would go before city council, 15-day notice requirement would be required. And then you'd have to go back to final PUD review by Planning and Zoning, and final PUD review by council if a type two. So, you know, to do a major amendment for one of these planning and developments, you could potentially be looking at five meetings that you would have to go through in order to get one of those major amendments. So, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission had heard Brenda's, Ms. Von Wondruska's request, directed staff to take a look at how other jurisdictions handle minor and major amendments to PUDs. We had gone through some of the usual suspects within the state, as well as some others outside of the state. We'd taken a look at Post Falls, Ketchum, Haley, Sun Valley, Mountain Village, Colorado, Big Bear Lake, California, Idaho Falls, Woodstock, Illinois, and Cooney County. There's really some carryover between all those jurisdictions about how they handle it. It's usually, through minor amendments, they allow administrative approval. So they would allow staff to, you know, if it met the minor amendment criteria, they would allow staff to take a look at that and approve administratively without going back to Planning and Zoning Commission or city council. They typically required, instead of maybe three to five meetings, depending upon if it's a type one or a type two, before Planning and Zoning or city council. They usually only require one public hearing before the decision-making body. So it could be Planning or Zoning or city council. You know, the commission had taken a look at Brenda's proposal. The issue you run into is that it really adversely affects other planned unit developments. So what she was wanting to have happen was some flexibility, that you have an existing building, and as long as there's a use that's allowed in the underlying zoning district, then it should be flexible. Well, the Silos, it's R4, multi-family, and so is Tiempo Commons. So, you know, you would look at the Silos and say that, well, converting an office to a residential apartment would probably make a whole lot of sense because there's already 12 apartments in the complex, right across the street, you have apartment complexes. So it, you know, probably fit in. But if you look at Tiempo Commons, to say that you could take one of those existing single-family homes and convert that to maybe a triplex, well, that would be completely out of character with that planning and development because it's all small lot, single-family dwellings. So we had taken a look at, you know, the possibility of crafting our current criteria around what Ms. Von Wondruska wanted to do, and really catering the criteria to that specific circumstance. And really what we found was just the adverse effect on a lot of the other PUDs. And so, you know, really what we had done was take a different approach, you know, in reviewing the current regulations for amending PUDs, there were some things that, you know, we could do to make the process a little bit easier to go through. And the first one would be to, like the other jurisdictions, shift the minor amendments to administrative approval, to allow staff to be able to do that, and not have to, you know, have the applicant go to Planning and Zoning Commission, and really have a, you know, some minor adjustment, and have them, not to say waste their time, but, you know, take time to be able to look at that when staff could. And then to simplify the criteria for what constitutes a major amendment, you know, we have a lot of criteria in the city code for approval of variances, conditional use permits. Nowhere do we have 11 criteria, you know? That's really a lot. And so, a lot of those are a little redundant, like maybe the first three, four. They all dealt with density or expansion of floor area. And so, what we had done was propose to go through and really kind of combine the redundant language, simplify those a little bit, and we've got those down to seven criteria now, and shift the way that, the way, the way the language is. So right now, we have the 11 criteria, and as long as you don't meet any of those 11, you're deemed to be a minor amendment. Well, it's kind of backwards. You know, usually it's, if you meet any of the criteria, then you're deemed to be a major. So we've shifted the structure of the section a little bit to make a little bit more sense. And the major amendment process, you know, we've gone through and taken a look at those other jurisdictions. There's no reason why you would need to go back all the way through the entire process and the neighborhood meeting and the two public hearings, when, you know, the project's already there, or it's almost complete in most of the time. And so, there's no reason why you need to introduce your concept to the neighborhood at the neighborhood meeting level. There's really no reason to go through the multiple public hearings. And so we'd propose to shift that to just one public hearing before the decision-making body. So if it's a type one PUD, it'd be one hearing before Planning and Zoning. If it's a type two, it'd be a hearing before Planning and Zoning with a recommendation on the city council, and then city council will conduct a public hearing as well. And so, when we implement those changes, this would be the finished product. You know, it may look like a lot of amending that's being done within the legislative format of the ordinance, but a lot of it's just restructuring. So in the beginning, we would change the minor section to include the administrative approval by the zoning administrator. We kept a lot of the same language about what you need to submit for a PUD amendment application. And then at the end, we inserted a statement or a sentence in there, more of a safety valve for, you know, if the zoning administrator determines that maybe there's a change that one of these PUDs wants to do, that it doesn't really meet any of the criteria, but it's obviously gonna adversely affect the subdivision or the development in some way, we want to reserve the right in order to be able to kick it into that major amendment category and have it processed through the major amendment. So we've got the statement at the end, or the sentence at the end of the minor amendment section, saying the administrator may decline to administratively approve such change and shall process the request as a major PUD amendment. And then moving into the major amendment section, just, you know, what I discussed before about the one public hearing before Planning and Zoning, and then for a type two, it'd be one before Planning and Zoning, and one before city council, with city council making the final decision. And then we've moved the criteria that used to be under the minor amendment, we've shifted those to put those under the major amendment criteria. It just, you know, flows a lot, a lot better that way, and easier to interpret. And so we've, like I said, reduced those to about seven criteria. Kept a lot of the same intent on those, you know? We haven't changed a whole lot. You know, you give some flexibility in order to maybe enclose the floor area, do additions, as long as they don't exceed 5%. You know, you're going through a construction project, there's always things that may come up, that may need a slight modification, and that allows for that flexibility. Really, the residential density is what, you know, hangs up a lot of these projects, like Brenda's project, there's only 12 apartments in there. And so, you know, whatever percentage we put on there, it's almost always gonna be increasing the residential density of the approved PUDs. So, you know, a lot of these projects will be kicked into the major amendment, but the simplification of just going to one public hearing is gonna alleviate a lot of those concerns from the developers. We have similar language, we give some flexibility about altering the number of dwelling units. So we had clarification here, because a lot of times, you have different housing types. Well, it's a single family, detached, single-family dwelling. You could have a twin home, which is a, two single-family dwellings that are attached together. Or you could have a townhouse, which is three or more single-family dwellings that are attached together. So just wanted to clarify, you know, what the intent of different housing types are, because they all could be construed as, as single-family dwellings. And then we kept a lot of the same language about not changing the bulk or clustering of the buildings, or the visual impact of the development. And then, of course, not changing any of the layouts of the streets, trails, paths, et cetera. We have a condition on there about environmental impact, substantially altering the phasing. And then, as you go through the PUD process, oftentimes, there's things you do that need density bonuses in order to maybe, you know, achieve a density that you want, so you have to increase the open space of the development, or you have to incorporate green building materials as part of that. And we have a scale, and it, you know, you can get percentages increased in order to be able to achieve a higher density than what you'd normally get within the base density of a PUD. So this is a lot of the same language. What we're mainly doing is just shifting the minor amendment to administrative, changing the criteria. the criteria, simplifying those, and shifting the major amendment process to allow for the one public hearing or two public hearings in case of the type-two PUD. So, hopefully that makes sense, and you're able to track that. Like I said, this is scheduled for October 3rd for a public hearing before the council, and Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing, and that happened September 14th, and they approved it with unanimous vote. So, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
So, just as an example, let's say that, because over at the silos, one of Brenda's buildings is offices, and she wants to convert that into residence. In other words, she's going to say, we're not going to, I can do better financially if I, if this was residential. So she, you would consider that a type-two situation where we're changing the use of it, probably, and it would have to go through the two-step process to do that?
Yeah, it, for her, she's a type-one PUD, so it's just that development on a single lot. It didn't go through a subdivision. So, with these proposed changes, all she would have to do is go to one hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission. So it's similar to what she would have to do right now for a minor amendment. You just throw in the public hearing as part of that process. But right now, you know, she would be declared a major amendment, and underneath the current code, she would be required to go through at least three meetings before Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the neighborhood meeting, in order to get approval for a major PUD amendment. So, we'd be shifting that to just one public hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission, and so she could, you know, accomplish that in about three to four weeks, typically.
Let's simplify that.
Instead of, three to four months.
Related to that, and I appreciate all of the work boiling down eleven to seven. That's a, that's quite an accomplishment, actually. What happens if there is a disagreement with the shift from minor to major amendment? What if the property owner doesn't agree with that? Is there an appeals process? Does there have to be? I'm just asking.
Well, the Board of Adjustment serves as the Board of Hearing Examiners. So any zoning code administrator's decision would be able to be appealed to the Board of Adjustment in order to be reviewed and have a determination by them.
Okay.
And if it came out, then, in a way that the person that brought it didn't like, then it could come to the council?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Well, it seems like it's been boiled down to something that's simpler and probably promotes cleaner changes of, especially small changes within PUDs. So, I guess we'll recommend that we go ahead and forward this to council for approval.
Actually, it goes to public hearing. This is informational only.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. We're down to reports now, and we're doing municipal equality index, and Jen is on the agenda here for doing that, but it looks like Chelsea's, like, been subbed in.
Yep.
Okay, where are you on it? It sounds like that'll take six weeks out of the process.
Oh, probably, yeah, because you, on the major side of things, it would.
Yeah, and on the minor side of things.
Just a quick, this one?
Yep, that's the one.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So I'm giving you information today about the municipal equality index for the city of Moscow, which is a measure done by the Human Rights Campaign, the nationwide LGBT So this is a bit of information about the Human Rights Campaign, if you did not know about them before. They're a member-based organization. They do operate partly as a human rights campaign, that's a political activist group, as well as a campaign foundation, which is a nonprofit. So they have a membership base that they share information with as well as get information And Moscow was chosen, actually, this last time they went out to their members and supporters to go for a vote, and in five, or in each state, five cities were nominated and two were chosen. Moscow was one of those cities. Coeur d'Alene was the other addition for Idaho this year. And the measurements have been going on since 2012, so other cities have already been measured and will continue to be measured. Those are the ones listed below. And I have Pullman up there as an example. They have also been measured, and since they're so close to us, I chose to include their measuring card, their scorecard. So essentially, the measures are to gauge the policies, services that the city provides for the LGBT community. Some of these measures will be the city's capital C, and then some of them are communities' lowercase c. So not everything would be a service provided by the city. And I'm going to go through Moscow's scoring that we would get, and then would like to submit this to the Human Rights Campaign. In order to put our best foot forward, we're going to be measured regardless, and then the information will be shared with their membership. So this is Pullman's scoring card from last year, and there's different sections that I will go over. So it examines laws and policies and services like I had spoke of before. Part one is about non-discrimination, two, municipality as an employer, services provided, law enforcement, and leadership on LGBT issues. For non-discrimination laws in Moscow, the city of Moscow has, in the city code Title X, Chapter 19, sexual orientation and gender expression or identity protected for employment, housing, and public accommodations, which means that we'll score all of the points possible for this section. And that seems to be the largest area of scoring for municipalities that Moscow's gone above and beyond what a lot of, even our state will do, but what a lot of other municipalities have done. The next section, municipality as an employer, goes about non-discrimination for city employment. Since there was a resolution passed for equal opportunity for sexual orientation in 2004 that is covered, and since the local law in the city code for non-discrimination for sexual orientation and gender identity was added, that covers the city's non-discrimination in employment practices for gender identity as well. So we will get all of those points. There were a few things that the city doesn't do at this time that we will not get points on. That is trans-inclusive benefits and city contractor non-discrimination ordinances, as well as other things like LGBT-specific programming or employee pride alliance and diversity training.
John?
You've got that contractor policy, city contractor non-discrimination ordinance, not at this time, but when you're hiring a person, you can't ask them where they are as far as age, or marriage, or whether they're gay, or whatever. Why can you ask them that question if they are wanting to get a contract with the city?
I mean, typically, John, what they're asking is whether by extension, we have non-discrimination policies in city employment, do we require contractors to contract with the city to extend those same non-discrimination policies? And we do not do so at this time. Now, we do have significant state and federal contracts where we require the contractor a successful bidder or a successful proposer, that they must meet a lot of non-discrimination federal laws, that sort of thing. But we don't specifically have an ordinance that directs contractors on our various contracts that they meet the same non-discrimination levels as the city has in its employment.
On the, one above that, trans-inclusive benefits, does that mean that if you have a same-sex couple, an employer, employee of the city who's part of a same-sex couple, that they, the benefits don't apply to them like they would in another, in a regular?
No. Unfortunately, the measure is looking for trans-inclusive benefits. That would mean that they would cover transgender operations.
Oh, I see.
And these measures are put out to every municipality the same as like a one-size-fits-all. So it's important to keep a level of scale in this. But they're looking for trans-inclusive, so that means for the employee to have transgender operations or any services that they might need from a healthcare provider due to that.
Good.
Next is municipal services, and this, this kind of blurs the line, like I said, between city capital C and community measures. The Human Rights Commission, we do actively have one of those, and they've been meeting since 2004. We currently don't have an LGBT or LGBTQ liaison for the mayor's office or in the administrative department. However, and I'll get to this again later on the slide for police services, Chief Fry does sit on the Human Rights Commission as the staff liaison, and operates, in a sense, as the LGBT liaison through that commission. That's what we currently have set up. The school district, for the Moscow school district, does have an anti-bullying policy that includes sexual orientation, but they currently do not include gender identity. And then there were ways to get bonus points on some of these measures. One would be giving a mechanism for your Human Rights Commission to be able to enforce non-discrimination policies, which the city of Moscow does not do. And the other would be to, that the city directly provides services to LGBT youth, homeless, elderly, and the other HIV/AIDS population or transgender population in your community. However, there are a lot of community organizations that we will submit that this does occur in Moscow, they're just not directly provided by the city. Those are the partners that we have, well, not really partners, but a community support base. For Inland Oasis, they have the free HIV testing and counseling. They host Palouse Pride, the LGBTQA office on the U of I campus, Alternatives to Violence of the Palouse, Moscow Idaho P-Flag, and the Moscow High School also has clubs and activities. They have a gay-straight alliance and a human rights club as well. Then, next is law enforcement, and again, like I had referenced before, we don't have an LGBT liaison in the task force or for the police department, but Chief Fry does sit as staff liaison to the Human Rights Commission as a part of his duties. And the other section of this was on reporting for hate crimes. I met with a few of the police officers and Chief Fry about this section, and we are submitting to the FBI, following their protocol and the protocol from the CLIRI Act for reporting hate crimes. And we've had four since 2009, and none of them were actually given charges. So, we're submitting them even though we don't have a lot of hate crimes in Moscow, and the ones that had occurred since 2009, no formal charges were placed. The next part's leadership on LGBT equality. The things that Moscow currently does is we, through different, through either the police department or through the Human Rights Commission, we help participate with the Palouse Pride, the marches in downtown Moscow, the festivals in East City Park. The Moscow Police Department went above and beyond this year to even make sure that the community felt safe for their Pride Festival, specifically this year due to events that had happened throughout the United States, as well as the Human Rights Commission working with different community groups for any educational opportunity. They have a booth at the Pride Festival, they work with Inland Oasis, they work with the Leitak County Human Rights Task Force, and the University of Idaho LGBTQ office. And then, of course, in 2013, when the ordinance came for the non-discrimination in employment and housing practices, it was voted on unanimously for approval. And then, ways to get bonus points was openly LGBT-elected or appointed leaders, and then city tests limits of restrictive state law. This might be the only time that the Dillon Rule in the state of Idaho helps us out. But since Idaho operates primarily in the Dillon Rule, then we go above and beyond the state's current protections for the LGBT population by providing the citywide ordinance for protection and non-discrimination, and the state does not do that. So, that's where we sit as far as our scoring. This is an example of just Idaho's scoring. They do state measures as well as municipal measures. And that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
When you go back to the Moscow High School bullying policy, like they have criteria where they're including things, so if you're not part of that, it's okay to bully people?
Uh, yes.
Why is that not just like, there's no bullying? You don't get to do that, I don't care who you are or what your deal is?
Um, yeah, so... I understand where you're going with that, but they want to include these protections to go above and beyond. And I've talked with the different Human Rights Commission members and other community members about the policies, and everybody was really interested to see how we would score after the fact, and maybe they included after the fact because they find it necessary. But they had included and put in specifically sexual orientation into their anti-bullying policy.
Yeah, it's very similar to the definition of hate crimes. There are certain things that define a crime as a hate crime if it's based on race, religion, sexual orientation, so on and so forth. Doesn't mean that a crime's not a crime, but to elevate it to a hate crime, or make it a per se hate crime, they actually list it out. So in Moscow High School, like similar schools, they have anti-bullying policies, they tolerate no bullying, but, but it's, I guess, prima facie evidence if it's based upon someone's sexual orientation, religion, that sort of thing. So, that's really what they're getting out after here.
And, I'm the council liaison for human rights, and they do plan, and they may have, I missed the last meeting, but of meeting with the school board to more clearly define what is acceptable and not acceptable in the Moscow school system as far as bullying or not bullying. Throw some definitions in there so that the teachers and the administration, and also to help with a situation like this, as far as this is bullying, this is not. You can do this, you cannot do that, and have it codified, if you will, from the school board. That has not been done, but they are working toward that with the school board.
Thank you. I realize this, beyond our jurisdiction, I just was interested in that as being, like, I couldn't imagine that it would be tolerated in any situation regardless of what the reason for it was. Okay? Thank you very much, Chelsea.
Thanks.
Good job.
I think we'll score quite well on this, eh?
Yeah, I want to thank Chelsea. She's our, of course, our administrative intern, has been for some time, so, great work. Appreciate your work on this.
The next report is the Public Art Project update. Kathleen's in charge of that.
I am. Yep.
Good afternoon, Kathleen.
Yep. So I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed what's been going on out there. So I just wanted to kind of bring you up to speed what's been going on out there. There's been some additions to vinyl wraps this year. And we do call for artists, and each artist is paid $100 for their artwork. And then we work with a local contractor, Steve with Cutting Edge, to do the installations. So some of our most recent ones are at Warbonnet and Highway 8, Perimeter and Highway 8. I don't know if you call it perimeter at Buffalo Wild Wings, or if the street name changes on the other side of the street. But this one, the image that's shown here with the heron, is by Ryan Law, and it's right there by Buffalo Wild Wings.
Does it become Farm Road right there, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. So, and then there's a new one at Blaine and Highway 8, which is on the Leita Trail. And it's really cute of backpackers. And then there's a special one, the Crop Dusters, down by Palouse River Drive and 95. So I didn't include all images, but you drive by them, and the photograph at Palouse River Drive and 95 is pretty cool. It's actually a three-box set by a guy. And Redner gets to look at it on his way home.
Every day.
Every day. So you've got to take care of the box. So the next project we're looking at is Alisa, and I applied for a grant with the Idaho Commission on the Arts. And we were awarded $6,194, and that's specific to public art. The number one project in the Public Art Master Plan is the library. So part of the grant funding was to do a match, and so we'll have $6,194 out of the 1%. And then Chris Sokol is here with library, and they'll be contributing $7,612. And that brings the project up to $20,000. And the goal on the project is have the completion by Art Walk 2017, which is about the third week in June. So some of the initial meetings, we don't have our panel created yet of who's going to work on the project, but that'll be another report. When we finalize our meetings and finalize our call, I'll come back to you. And who's going to be representing the library versus the city versus the MAC. And we have a process in place with our public art guidelines on how to proceed. But this is the area that initially Chris Sokol identified as a need, and then Iris Mays, who's the chair with the Moscow Arts Commission, is this leftover area in front of the library. So we'll continue to talk. But I just wanted to let you know that's going to move forward. Before we proceed with the project, I'll come back to you with all the parameters on where we're going. And then, we're going to have a city hall interpretive sign out front. So Nicole with the Water Department installed all the Y-Scape plantings, which are phenomenal out front. We're going to do an initial call for an artist, actually a team. It'll be a team of artists because there will be some fabrication of creating the base, and then there'll be interpretive, most likely with a graphic artist, for the top. But Nicole researched some different forms of signs out there, so I kind of gave you a visual of what the potential is. So the cost to the sign is about $3,500. And again, the completion would be Art Walk 2017. And this project will be worked and vetted through the Historic Commission and also the Arts Commission, Public Works, and the Art Department. And then this is a new one with the Gritman Main Street Paving Program. I met with Bill Belknap and looked at different corners and installations, and we've been wanting to take the Plinth project that we have over at ITD, or the...
ITC.
ITC, thanks, Harry. We have the sculpture project over there with the trade-outs of all the sculptures every year. So to enhance Main Street, starting down at Gritman, it would be nice to have some future infrastructure for future installations. So we've been, we kind of looked at this lighting standard and how it would fit in with the other lighting standards, and they have used these poured concrete substrates. And we would look at some type of application, whether it's a welding or the Corten steel we've used over on the Plinths at the Transit Center. So we're kind of looking at what the opportunities are on those corners down there on Main before they redo all the bobouts and everything. And if we can get the Plinths in there in the middle of the pouring versus an after fact, it'll be a better project. And Coeur d'Alene has a lot of sculptures downtown, and they install the sculptures for a year, and then they're moved on. So it would be a pretty good partnership to work with Coeur d'Alene, because a lot of artists are moving sculptures in from out of state, and we could partner with their Arts Commission and look at bringing some sculptures down here to Moscow. We're at the Transit Center, just a clarification, we really concentrate on the Sculpture Lab with the University of Idaho, because it's right down the street on that College Avenue there. And they have a lot of students, like four out of the five works right now are student work. So that's kind of important to keep that in mind as we move forward. This is a big one. You know the Smithsonian's coming. And so Dulce, castrating with the Historical Society, has been working with the Moscow Public Library, and we've kind of looked at how to put it out there a little more. And she received another grant from Idaho Humanities to support this project. So this funding is coming from the Historical Society, but then again, we're partnering with the library. So we're looking at word phases, phrases, that could be put on our sidewalks to emphasize the Waterways Project coming, the Smithsonian coming. And then we have a poet laureate for the city. So Tiffany Midge is going to be doing a poetry reading in October at the library. But the library has actually composed a list of famous quotes by authors on the importance of water. And then Dulce sent me a Facebook post today that she actually is putting together a Facebook site for this project and for the Waterways Project. So I just wanted to show you an example. And this is what was done in Seattle. And of course, you only see the writing when it rains or snows. And it's only, it's kind of like a Thompson's Water Seal product, but we're actually getting the more eco-friendly product that won't go in storm drains, which Dulce has been researching. But we're going to look at a map, and we're going to look at best practices and best places to do this. And I met with Jenny Ford at the Transit Center, and we're going to look at busy bus stations. And, yeah, and so Dulce's kind of taken the lead in that, but we're helping out with the city and then the library as well. So Chris is here with the library in support. I don't know if you...
She'd like to talk? That'd be great.
Well, she can. And they have a new vinyl wrap on their book drop of famous authors.
Good afternoon.
I don't have anything prepared. I just would like to indicate, this is a process, this is something that's been a process for a while, the public art idea at the library. I'm director of the library now. It's only been for about a year and a half. But previous to that, there was the Front Entry Project that was done in the library, new steps, new plantings, grounds were turned around a little bit. And public art was envisioned as part of that project. It just hadn't happened. So I would now like to make sure that that happens and that the library has been identified in various venues as being a good site that the public would like to see some art. So it makes sense to put it outside. We're not sure what we'll be doing with the inside of the library. We may be doing some renovation inside. So it makes sense to have something outside. It's also more visible along a portion of the week, you know. So we also have, in addition to the library providing some funding from donations and things, we also have a Friends Group that I think would be willing to contribute money to for our portion of that.
It sounds like there's pretty good funding in place for the outdoor thing.
Right, right. We've committed about $70,000 in addition to the grant that Kathleen got in, and the 1%.
We look forward to seeing something on the lawn there pretty soon.
And Chris, who's the staff person with the library that researched the authors and the quotes for the water?
Jessica Bowman.
Yeah, yeah. Really bright.
Yeah, we look forward to having something like this too at the library, maybe on a long-term basis, do this one figure out beyond the 1%.
I love this idea. I really do. It's great. They only last about six months, so we better get a lot of snow. Or a lottery. Any questions? No?
You've done pretty well. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen.
It's good to be up to date on that. I'm glad to see something's coming at the library. All right, that's the end of our agenda for today. At the Administrative Commission, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consider us adjourned.